Are we good? Good. Stephen, ready?
All ready.
You're ready to go.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. I know we're a little bit late, but we're ready to begin our public session. We just came out of closed session. There was no reportable action from our closed session. Brings us to the pledge of allegiance. If you would stand and join me, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're on to public comments. This is an opportunity to speak on an item that is not on our agenda, but within the purview of the city council. Any requests to speak under public comment? Okay, then we will move on to presentations. Public art committee, update on goals and accomplishments. Are they in there drinking wine?
I don't know. She's gonna sit over there. She's gotta click or just push the bottom button.
Sit the bottom bush?
Well, let's go. We're ready.
Here. Oh, there you go. There you go.
Mike. Mike.
Nope, still not on. There you go. The red's going. Okay. I'm Erling Horn, Chair of the Public Art Committee, and I would like to introduce...
Ah.
Nope, nope, still not on. There you go. There you go. The red's going. Okay. I'm Erling Horn, Chair of the Public Art Committee this year, and I would like to introduce, first of all, our new staff member, Jenny Rosen. Jenny is in the kitchen. We had a wonderful reception, just started at 5:00, and when you provide fantastic art, good food, and good drink, it just keeps going, and it's still going.
Okay, that's good.
And that's where I want Jenny's in. Any rate, she's our brand-new staff. She replaced Juliet Hanson, who was our staff from 2013 up until last year. And before her, it was Ann Meredith, who started us off, and I think around 2008. So she's our third staff over, what, 15 years?
Fifteen, sixteen years.
Yeah. So, any rate, Jenny has a unique perspective because she was a member of our committee. And when the opening came up, she thought, hey, you know what? I'll apply. And so it's an example of, sort of, we have a member, former member, that is now a member of sort of the gig, the gig kind of society we're living in now. And the rest of the members, we've got Susan Loria, she couldn't be here, but her husband's here. Then we have a brand-new member, Dave Dondaro. Is Dave here? Could you stand up?
Yes, Dave.
Hey, Dave. And another new member is Yuki Fujimoto, who is a... Dave's a photographer. Yuki is a performance artist and dancer, and so she brings that perspective. And then we have Dennis Mudgeet.
Dennis.
And Janice Peacock, sitting next to me. And Tom Tannehill, who is not here. And Sandra Rolfe is also not, is our member and not here. And from this point, I think I'll turn this over to Janice, and she'll...
Uh-oh.
Are you ready to go?
Oh, I'm always ready to go. Born ready.
And she'll talk about...
All right, we'll see how this goes. I might have to stand up over there.
Our exhibitions are what we have going on currently. I can... Go ahead.
No, I got... We got it. So, right now...
So, Janice, if you could speak on the microphone, that'll get in the record that way.
Yes, of course. So, right now, we have the Jared Young Chang exhibition that's going on right outside of our door, and he is a second-generation Chinese-American, born in, what was then, the territory of Hawaii. So all of this work is actually a posthumous exhibition that was put together by his son, Gordon Chang. And so if you haven't had a chance to go look at this exhibition, I highly recommend it. I'm not going to read all the text and all these slides, because you guys can read that at your leisure. Next is some other exhibitions that we've had here at the... in this library gallery. This is Ellen Rynchess, and it was called "All Stores, Fans, Fams, and Friends." Say that three times fast. And it was a really neat, sort of, baseball-oriented exhibition, very fun and well-loved exhibition that we had here in the fall. And then we had a brand-new exhibition called "El Pi in the Sky." It was a spotlight on various El Pi instructors, who are artists, and that show was in August and September. And it was just really a neat opportunity to bring these talented artists in and have them show off their work, and not just be working with children, helping those children also be artistically expressive. We had a couple of other additional exhibitions this year. We had Joel Tesh, who had some really amazing portraits. And also, we had the Camera Cabal, which was a set of photographers who are here in the San Francisco Bay Area, showing their work last summer. In the Homework Center, we had a fantastic exhibition in the fall called "Critters" by Sharon Tama, and there is one of her paintings. Those were in the homework room, which has had some really phenomenal pieces up on it in that space over the years. We do have some new public art that was installed this year. Actually, this particular piece was just installed a couple of weeks ago, and it is at 945 Mountain View, right behind Trader Joe's. It's by an artist named Alice Stern, and it's a set of two granite circles that are embedded in the driveway, of this communal driveway, at this property. And there are scribed marks in the circle that basically are a part of a quilt pattern, and that's called "Storm at Sea." Anyway, it just went in, and it looks fantastic. If you get the opportunity, I recommend you go by and look at it. It relates back to the community of Lafayette and the connection that we have to each other and to the streams that flow through our town. And then we also have another utility box wrap that went up this year, and this was an extension of the program that we did a couple of years ago for the centennial? No. Fifty years.
Fiftieth.
Fiftieth. And so, this was... It only feels like centennial. So, anyway, this was an additional utility box that we were able to wrap with art from the El Pi program with children, who contributed art to make these wonderful boxes, and it's our hope that we can do more of these boxes. This has been a really popular and fun project. We have had some other accomplishments this year. We have new signage out in the gallery space that helps sort of declutter that area, and so we do have those up, actually, out in the gallery now. We did have a donation from former city manager Steve Falk called "Seeing Red." It's already installed. It's four amazing... Excuse me, six amazing panels that live in the stairwell, just right across the hall. So if you haven't had a chance, it's a really neat piece to go and check out. We also have a new program for how we do calls for new artists to exhibit in our gallery space. We're basically now, rather than having a rolling process, we just take applications during the first quarter of the year, and then we have a very set schedule now for when exhibitions come in and out of the gallery, which I think will be helpful for us as a committee, and actually really help for artists to know that they'll have a significant amount of exhibition time. And then we did update the website, and there are other things that we want to do digitally going forward to really enhance our outreach to the community through the World Wide Web, through this crazy thing called the Internet. Oops, wrong way. I think that might be... Oh, no, just a couple other things. So we do have a couple of projects that are coming up. It's hard to see in this picture, but it's an enormous, like, five-foot-tall dandelion seed, and this is part of the Town Center project with BART, where we have this sort of kinetic, overhanging art piece that will sit over the new quad that's going in near BART, and that's a project with Kinematics Lab. And I wish I had more and better pictures of what that looks like, but that is one enormous dandelion seed. And then the other piece is with Lennox Homes, which is a development on Lafayette Circle. And this is the piece of art that was selected to go at the corner, basically at the entrance to that new development. It's a piece by Oakland artist JP Long, and it's called "Flight," and it's made of metal that has been powder-coated in those areas where you see the colors. And I think that is the end of my part, and now I will turn you back over to Erling.
Okay, thank you. I should mention that we're working with the Creeks Committee. The Creeks Committee is coming up with a creek icon that they will use on identifying the creeks, and any signings that they may do, pathway marks or whatever, where the creek's involved, they'll use this icon, and that's in work. Some of the other additional projects that are coming up that we haven't had art submissions yet would be the Lennar Project, which is basically across the street. Then we have on Lafayette Circle, the Madigan Project, which is, I think it's some condos on Lafayette Circle, and we're working with them. I think that we submitted a list of artists for their review. And then Brown Avenue's got, I think, something like 13 condo units that are going up between the corner of Brown and Monte Carlo, and that's in the same situation of reviewing our master list and working with us with regard to that project. And that has to do with the 1% requirement for commercial projects downtown. And then, on our ongoing project list, we have Public Art Walk and Talk, and that, I think, is the 22nd...
Twenty-first of March.
Twenty-first of March. Well, this is brand-new, and Janice is doing it.
Doing it. Here, let me tell you about it.
Yes.
March 21st, meet me here at 1:00. We're gonna walk through the whole downtown and look at all the public art.
Great.
And so we'll start here. There will be an artist talk here, and then we will meander through town and end at Alice Stern's piece there behind Trader Joe's, and it's gonna be fantastic. We already tried the walk, and it's really neat, so join me.
And that particular walk will give you 10 points on your IQ improvement, which is fantastic. That's not...
That's pretty good.
I don't know.
We have some temporary public art here, and that's the bear on Golden Gate Avenue called Ursus Reditivitus, and the recycled bear. It's made of found iron equipment, and our contract with the artist, Alex Nolan, expires in May. And so there's a couple things. We can return the work to the artist. Maraga may be interested in it, but the community center may be interested in it, and the community center has a couple of ongoing projects, so they couldn't take it for another year and a half, two years. So if they decided they're interested, we might be able to work something out with the artist with regard... And keep it. Or perhaps the community center would like to buy it. We don't know, but it's in the works, and we're gonna have to do something about this by the end of May. And then we've got a brand-new display case, museum-quality display case ordered, and you approve that. Thank you for that. We'll be ordering that in March. Then we're working on a docent program so that we can actually open up our little gallery here at least once a week, every week. And we're going to work with the youth or the seniors. First of all, we have to find out what the library will accept and what their rules and criteria and policies are with regard to volunteer help, and then we'll go to the committees, the commissions, and see what interest they have. And if we could pull this off, I think next fall, we may be able to hold this open at least a half a day, once every week. And then there's another project that's ongoing, and that's Optical Streams. That's the work of art that's in the children's section of the library on the deck, which is, you know, the stainless steel matrix that outlines our creek system in town in Lafayette, and it has those dichronic...
Dichronic discs?
Dichrolic discs with symbols of the periodic table on it. That also adds 10 points to the IQ of our kids. And that is going to be moved, because they're going to enclose that deck. And so we're working with the artist. It's a library project, so they're in charge, but we sort of consult with them to make sure that that is moved, and the artist is happy, and the library's happy, and the kids are happy. And then we're working on some guidelines for public safety and maintenance of an ongoing maintenance program with the art that we have. And our goals for the year, for this coming year, it will be an update of our master plan. We will review the master list of preferred artists and add to it. We're going to update our online public art map, and Janice, again, is... And your daughter, actually, has worked on that. And so we're gonna take care of that. In addition to that, we'll be working on a website on our public art connection with the Lafayette Library Learning Center. And then we're going to continue to showcase local artists here, and this is something that's not on my bailiwick, but it's Instagram, and we're going to be doing something with Instagram.
It's gonna be awesome.
Yes, we're doing something awesome with Instagram.
Well, we're gonna... You know, I mean, Instagram is all about images, and public art is all about visual...
Yes.
You know, visual... Anyway, you know what I'm trying to say. It's late, and...
We're a busy group of people, and thank you for your cooperation and listening to us and your continued support. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Don't go anywhere. We may have questions. Are there questions? Vice Mayor? Councilmember Bliss?
Just really two quick comments. First of all, thank you for the excellent report. This is incredibly exciting, and there's just so much work that the committee's doing, and it's visible in so many concrete ways in the committee. So thank you to you and the committee for all the work on this. The one thought I had is just something that caught my ear when you were talking about this docent program that you're looking at. It's exciting to hear that potentially taking shape, and it sounds as though you were exploring, working with either youth or senior programming to make that happen, the docent program. And the one thought I had, and this is something to maybe just tuck away as you move forward, but we've talked a lot on council over the last year about looking for opportunities in the city to create intergenerational programming, so I just throw that out as a possibility that there might be ways to actually... I know it says here, youth or seniors could be brought into the mix. It could be interesting, just as a thought, to think about, if there's ways to actually involve both and create some cross-generational collaboration on that. So just something to tuck away as you move forward that jumped out, but overall, just a great report, and thank you for all the great work.
Well, I had a note on that also. I was thinking maybe it would be good to have you contact the youth commission...
Right.
...about that opportunity for the docent work, and then, of course, senior services. They may actually have some folks there who would be interested.
Well, I think that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
We have to find out what the rules are with regard to just how do we staff?
Understood. Right.
How to staff that. But I think that suggestion of yours, Steve, and Mayor Mike, is we could work with the youth commission during the school year, and then the seniors could carry it through...
Absolutely.
Holidays and, you know...
Or maybe they'd even do it the same time. That would be scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that'll be fun.
I was kinda wondering about the art walk. Are you getting good response on that at this point? Are you finding people interested, or...
You know, we haven't gotten the word out there very much so far.
Okay.
The people that we have talked to have been excited about it, but we have a lot more promotion that we need to do...
Okay.
Now that we're getting closer.
All right. Well, you know, the city's website is a good place to put it.
Yep, and we'll make sure that it goes into, you know, the Friday update or roundup or whatever it's called these days. And since it starts here at the library, I also think the library will be willing to do some promotion for us as well.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Vice Mayor Candell?
Yeah, just thanking you so much for everything you do, all of you. They did the presentation, but all of you, thank you for all your work.
And we also take this as an opportunity to honor and recognize the time you have spent as volunteers on the commission. I have three recognitions, which I think fit people who are here. Janice Peacock for five years of service.
Wow.
Erling Horn for 10 years. And Dennis Mudgeet for 10 years. So I'll come on down there.
Who's gonna take the picture?
Dennis and I are the old salts. Thank you very much. There you go.
Oh. Thank you, Teresa. Jeff's not here, our picture taker.
We have the Jeff.
Well, 'cause she's not in it then.
Oh, okay. All right.
Come over here. Come on. We're gonna be right over here. You all want to give a hand?
Teresa. We're gonna take... Wouldn't hurt to smile.
Same heart.
You have to pretend it's clicking like Jeff's. Good, thank you. Enthusiasm. Very strong.
Just a quick comment to our new members. This is payday.
Don't tell him that, though. Quit. Sorry, that didn't work.
Okay, thank you very much for that. We will now move on to consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that council members would like to remove for discussion? Okay, are there any requests for removal from the public? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, so we're moving second. Any discussion? Call the question. All fair or say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous with one absence. Okay, that moves us to the staff report. First is going to be on the number of public meetings the city can hold on the terraces project. Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, members of the council. At the last city council meeting, Councilmember Burks asked the question that is before you on the agenda regarding the number of meetings that could be held on pending application the terraces of Lafayette, and so we advised that we would have the city attorney for the matter, Rob Hodle, with Cobbins, here at the next meeting to speak to the matter, and so he is here with us.
Excellent.
Okay. And this issue arises because of SB 330, which was... became effective on January 1st this year, which basically, one of its main requirements is that for certain housing development projects that meet certain affordability criteria, which the terraces project does, that a city reviewing those projects may not hold more than five total hearings on that project. There are... It's also clear under the bill that a continuance of a hearing counts, so both the initial hearing and the further hearing upon continuance all count as hearings toward the total of five hearings. There is an exception for appeals of legislative approvals, such as rezonings or general plan amendments. For the terraces project in particular, all of the proposed approvals are not legislative. They're quasi-adjudicatory in nature, and they are not subject to that exception, so they would count as hearings towards the five... Appeal hearings would count, in this case, would count towards the five-hearing limit. There is some uncertainty in how the statute is drafted as to how it applies to projects like the terraces that were deemed complete before SB 330 became effective. For this particular project, particularly because of... Both because of that uncertainty, because of the potential for litigation and the history of this project, and the amount of litigation that has already occurred with respect to this project, I'd strongly recommend conservatively assuming and treating this project as if SB 330 applies, rather than open the door to any risk associated with that for this particular project.
Okay, so I think we're ready for questions, and I'll just start off with, just to clarify, a continued hearing counts as two hearings. Is that correct?
Right. If there actually is, I would say that if the hearing is continued before there's any public comment or any discussion of the item, that first decision to continue the hearing should not count as a hearing. But if there is a hearing that starts where the hearing does not come to a conclusion, and the decision-making body, whether it's the planning commission or the city council, continues it for further discussion and another hearing, both of those two hearings, under the language of SB 330, would count towards the total of five.
Okay, so just to clarify again, if there is a hearing on the terraces project, and before there's any public comment, the meeting is continued to another date, is that one meeting, and then the next continued meeting would be a second? Or would that all be the continuation of one meeting because the public did not speak in the first meeting?
Well, I would conservatively believe... It's not entirely clear from the statute how that's to be handled, but I would conservatively believe that if there... Or approach it as if there is any presentation about the project, whether or not it's open to public comment or not, and if there's council discussion about the merits of the project at all, that likely would be counted towards the five-hearing limit. If it's simply a matter of the item coming up on the agenda and the council taking or planning commission taking a vote to continue it to a later date...
Without discussion.
I don't believe that that should count towards the five-hearing limit.
Okay, that clarifies it for me. And when it comes to appeals, what you're saying is, in the case of the terraces, there are no exceptions for the appeal process on the five-meeting limit?
Right. The legislature very clearly said that legislative appeals are not subject to the five-hearing limit, and, you know, under basic principles of statutory interpretations, it's assumed that they knew how to write that exception for legislative appeals. They chose not to include non-legislative approvals in that exception. So appeals of non-legislative approvals, such as those involved in the terraces project, are not subject to the exception and count towards the five-hearing limit.
So if the planning commission uses five meetings to come to a decision on the terraces project, and it is appealed, what happens?
At that point, the five-hearing limit has been exceeded. The applicant may seek, potentially seek judicial remedy to that. Most likely, they would go to court and seek a writ compelling the city council to take action on the project.
So they could go and get the courts to direct the city to continue with the appeal process? Is that what you're saying?
Most likely, they would direct the city to have one more hearing and make a decision on the project at that time. There is... It's not the statute, SB 330... Most likely, they would direct the city to have one more hearing and make a decision on the project at that time. There is, it's not, the statute, SB 330, is not entirely clear what the remedy is. So, there also is, you know, some, and it also relates to the Permit Streamlining Act to a degree as well. So, there is some risk in that scenario, particularly if things have gone beyond the time limits of the Permit Streamlining Act at that point. There's some risk that if the applicant issues the proper notices, that they could seek to have a court determine that the project is deemed approved at that point as well.
Okay. So, if five meetings are held, and a decision is made, let's just say by the planning commission, but in our process, that can be appealed to the city council, you're suggesting that it's possible that someone could have the courts allow one more meeting to hear the appeal? Or, it may be possible that the courts would deem the project as unappealable, and therefore, the decision that's made at planning commission would stand?
Right. The latter seems, is the less likely possibility, but it's not something I could rule out.
Okay. I know this is new. I just have to do what I can to best understand where we are in this process. And hopefully, the public also gets a better picture of what we have to do or what our duties are under the new law. Okay? Other questions or thoughts? Councilmember Bliss?
I have a question. So, since the, I mean, since the clear goal, first of all, thank you for the clarification. Really helpful to have this report. Since the clear intention of SB 330 is to, to the benefit of applicants, streamline the process by which projects get reviewed and decided upon, is there anything in SB 330 that allows applicants to, just of their own decision and will, waive the five-meeting limit? Or is that limited in place regardless of the preferences of the applicant?
I don't believe that there is a specific waiver provision for those five hearings. Actually, there is not. It may be possible to, we'd have to do a little bit more research to consider whether the applicant and the city could validly agree to a waiver of the five-hearing limit, but there's nothing specifically providing for one.
Thank you.
Other questions? Vice Mayor Candell?
I do. It's not directly with this, but more with the anticipation that we're going to have very long meetings. We have a rule right now that we can't start any new topic or whatever after midnight. How does that, and do we have any rules on how early we start? And so, I'm just trying to understand what, for a particular meeting, what are our parameters on any one meeting?
Right, well, I would certainly recommend that as much as possible that special meetings be held where it's either the, the terraces project is either the main item to be discussed or the only item to be discussed, so that it's unlikely that it would come up as a new matter after midnight.
Okay, so, but we could still waive the new matter after midnight regardless, right? I mean, that's not.
That's our, that's our rule.
That's our rule. Okay, that's our rule. That's not a.
That's something we can deal with.
We can do it, okay. That was my question.
But I think what I'm hearing you say is, starting the meeting with just that one item would be probably the best bet to get the most time to consider that one item. And then, the starting time, once again, is up to us.
Okay.
So, we normally do seven o'clock, but we may choose to start at six, to give ourselves an extra hour or something. Those would not run afoul of SB 330's law, I take it?
No, there's no restrictions on the length of any particular one of those five hearings.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Do we have any public comments? Ah, we do, all right. Mar, why don't you go right on up? And, yeah.
Would you like me to go first or second? It's your prerogative.
Go right ahead.
Hi, Brian Winter, on behalf of O'Brien Land Company.
I don't know if that microphone is on. It doesn't sound like it is. There it is, okay. Good.
Hi, Brian Winter, on behalf of O'Brien Land Company. I'm with Miller Star Regalia in Walnut Creek, and I'm the land use council for my client. And just want to touch base briefly on a couple of points. I largely agree with Mr. Hodl. Of course, laws, especially long and complicated laws like SB 330, don't necessarily address every issue, and there can be open areas or ambiguities. But in this case, I would suggest a couple of different points. One, of course, is that I strongly believe that the five-hearing limit does apply. We wrote a letter to that effect in the fall. If the council opens a meeting, regardless of what occurs after the meeting is opened, I would contend that that counts as a meeting. No matter what transpires, that's an open meeting, that counts as one of the five. There are no provisions in SB 330 regarding waiver one way or the other. The bill is silent on that particular point. And another point that I don't believe came up is that once the environmental review process is complete in the form of the addendum that the city's peer review consultant is conducting, there's also a 90-day shot clock that applies in which all of the hearings must occur. So, just want to flag those additional points for your reference, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for the speaker? Vice Mayor Candell?
I do, real quick. So, the EIR, there was, a question came up. The, that, the 90-day clock comes up when it's certified? Is that the right term?
Well, this is different because the EIR was certified in 2013, so.
The addendum has to be then certified?
I do not agree that the addendum must be certified. I strongly disagree with that. The addendum is complete as soon as it's made public, and the 90-day clock starts at that point. But this is very different than an environmental document. The addendum is something on top of the environmental document. The environmental document is the EIR that was certified in 2013.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Libby Henry?
Hi. First of all, I wasn't clear on the gentleman. I assume you're another attorney representing O'Brien?
No, I'm representing the city.
You are? Okay. I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And the EIR, I mean, I feel like O'Brien is having the opportunity to declare that their reports are final, and there's no dispute, when there was a great deal of discussion, if you were there. There was a great deal of discussion and dispute about the results, which we weren't giving real data. It was just told to us, oh, well, they're the same results, and that was only just about traffic. That was only one small part of the whole problem. And for this gentleman, the attorney, to say it started in 2013, excuse me, that was seven years ago now. And that would be null and void, I believe, particularly since this, the SB 330, just went into effect in January, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, this whole timeline and trying to force things through without, first of all, public knowledge, public being informed, without a clear and complete EIR, not just on traffic, but on all the other issues that we're faced with. And that doesn't even include considering all the development that is already in process on Mount Diablo Boulevard itself. I'm sure you're all aware. Mount Lafayette has one main street. So, this whole discussion that seems to be favoring O'Brien, you know, pushing this thing through without the public being informed, without the public being, you know, he mentioned, it doesn't matter whether the public has any time for comment. Well, I strongly, and I know a lot of other people strongly, object to that because we're the ones being faced with horrendous problems because of what they want to do and what's already occurred in the last 10 years in Lafayette. And I don't know, I'm sure most of you are aware that Lafayette made the New York Times last Sunday because of O'Brien. They put it in there. And Gavin Newsom, they've gotten to Gavin Newsom. He was on Seth Meyers on Tuesday night talking about NIMBYs and being derogatory.
So, Ms. Henry, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. But I think these things need to be, these questions need to be answered and addressed
Okay.
before we have some more overdevelopment shoved down our throats.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker?
No, thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, then I will bring it back to the council. This is really meant to be a verbal report on the circumstances. And it says here, direct staff. I don't know if there's really any direction that we have to give. We've been informed as to the position that our council is taking. And we have, I think, one meeting already that's been done under the SB 330 ruling or law.
That's correct.
So, we have four left. And that's what we have. Ms. Henry? You spoke. You don't yell from the audience. So, any other thoughts, questions, or concerns? Councilmember Geringer?
No, just thanking Councilmember Burks for asking this to come forward and for the verbal report. And just thank you.
Okay. All right, well then, thank you for the report, Ms. Hodl. Appreciate that.
Pleasure.
And with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is Sarah Allen, giving us the tentative schedule and initial discussion for the 2040 general plan update and council strategic goal number two.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson and members of the council. We are excited to be here this evening before you, speaking about the general plan update. Part of that excitement stems from the fact that this is only the third time in the city's history that we've done a comprehensive update. So, the first being in 1974, and then, most recently, in 2002. So, while we're kind of looking at big picture, it's valuable to kind of take a look at the vision statement of the city and just kind of, you know, reflect on why we incorporated and who we are as a city. And I think that we've done a good job of preserving our semi-royal character and maintaining our limited service city. So, we did incorporate in 1968 as a limited service city with these four main components. And we remain a contract city today. So, as you know, the general plan is the city's guiding document for land use matters. And the general plan provides direction implementing big ideas for the city through goals, policies, and programs. And while the zoning code is the implementation tool of the general plan, we still rely heavily on the general plan itself to kind of look at the purpose and intent and the values of our community. It is a long-range document, so with a horizon of approximately 20 years. So, we do envision this current update being a vision through 2040 and hopefully adopted in 2024. And so, the state law does require each city to have a general plan, but we also find it valuable in outlining our guiding principles. And our current general plan places high value on preserving our semi-royal character, increasing that sense of community and public involvement in planning and city policy in general, and of course, maintaining the natural qualities that our town has. And so, updating, going through this update will provide, and the various forms of public engagement will help to identify whether or not that vision is still what the community values or if there's some alterations necessary. So, there are several elements of a general plan that are required. Those are listed here. There is a new element that is required per state law, which is greenhouse gas emissions. That's something we can consider as part of creating either a separate chapter or element itself, or incorporating it throughout the document. There are some additional elements that we could consider, keeping in mind that those would increase the overall timeline and cost of the update. So, why are we updating it? So, our current general plan is approximately 18 years old, so it's sort of nearing the end of its intended life. And there's, of course, several changes in state law. We have the Plan Bay Area regional planning effort going on as well as our required housing element that is also in progress. But primarily, we're also concerned with the city council goal number two, which was adopted in January of 2019. Strategic goal number two indicates that we should develop and define the city's core values and corresponding key elements that represent Lafayette's character. And we think that aligns perfectly with our general plan update. And the results of that outreach will be codified and formalized in the general plan itself. So, of course, public engagement is a critical component to this. And we have lots of great ideas about how to do that, not just these types of public meetings. That's not the most effective way to go about it. And we believe that, you know, people who live and work here should have a say in how the city is developed. So, we do have some ideas about that, but one of those ideas is providing for a general plan advisory committee. And so, what we're seeking this evening is to get some feedback from the council on the stakeholder list that was an attachment in the report, as well as some of those key questions as to sort of who should make up the committee, what is our recruiting strategy, what will the ultimate charge of the general plan advisory committee be? What is the expected outcome? And then, meeting schedule, because this can take quite some time. And so, we definitely need people who are willing and able to serve for several years. So, with that, I'm available for questions, if you have any.
Okay, are there any questions for staff? No? Okay. All right, well, it was a good presentation. There's no questions. So, you're looking for some direction from us, and you want to lead us through what we want to focus on here?
So, in, I believe it's the last document in your packet. There's a stakeholder list. So, we can project it on the screen as well. So, just outlining whether or not, you know, these are sort of general categories, thinking through whether or not we've, this has been fully inclusive, if there's anything we've missed. And then, kind of going through those questions that are on page five of the staff report under advisory committee.
So, I would just, I was on the last general plan advisory committee, so I have a little sense of how that flows. As I remember, it was the planning commission that actually put us together as a group. And we worked with a consultant for quite some time. And then, the planning commission picked up the document, and then, we got back feedback, and we worked on it some more. And it was a long, long process. So, the meeting schedule question might be a little premature at this point. I think we got a little time. But looking at your list, as I remember, we had, I think, about eight to 10 members originally. I.
We had more.
Maybe there are more? Well, there are many, who showed up? We had eight or 10 people who showed up consistently, and there was kind of a core group. I think the list that you have here. I, I think the list that you have here, for me, I would say the schools, the institutions that you identified are the right institutions. But then I think, much like we did when we talked about our city manager process, I think it was Councilmember Bliss and Burks who suggested there'd be kind of a lottery or an opportunity for people who, we just don't know who they are or what they're associated, they're just interested to apply and be selected and added to the group and given, you know, the full authority of everyone else. And I think that's a great way to kind of add in an opportunity for anyone to get involved, not just those who are tied to certain institutions, certain groups. So that would be my comment so far on, on what I see. Other thoughts? Councilmember Geringer?
First of all, thank you. I saw somewhere you served for 10 years or something on.
I think it was 15, but don't worry about it. It's no big.
It might have been. So I know your, your experience on that. I did think that, I do also agree on the not having every group that's on that list. And I also thought that Councilmember Bliss's idea about the lottery and having at-large, and I thought the implementation of it that city staff put in, I thought was a great way to do that. We got people who weren't necessarily involved otherwise, which they were involved enough to put their name in and to come, and I thought we got good input, input from that. I do think that that's a big, to try and meet everyone on that list would be a really large committee. The other piece of it, last time, so you said that the planning commission is who put the advisory.
I believe, I remember being appointed by the planning commission to the general plan advisory committee. That's my memory.
Okay, so the commission appointed.
Where?
Representative.
Yes. The planning commission, basically, I was one of the representatives appointed to be part of the general plan advisory committee. So we were really being advisors to the planning commission.
Okay. That was my other question on, because one of the questions that you were asking is, is it a referral body? Is it helping to do the gathering information? So it's really through the planning commission and should maybe making these decisions?
Well, the way we worked, and I, I don't want to end up going over the whole process, but.
No, yeah, but.
We had, Carol was there, Guy Atwood, Lynn Hadean.
I think Annette Robert.
And so between Carol, Lynn, and Guy, they wrote the whole thing. And, right?
Pretty much.
And Jean was there also.
Gina Televich.
Carol's nodding her head.
Judy Garvin.
We went line by line and word by word, and Lynn had written them all down. And we had a consultant. I think we burned through two or three consultants, they just got tired and left, right? The years went by. But they really did a phenomenal job of giving this document real body. And that, to me, was kind of where it started. And the planning commission kind of took it from there, and they kind of modified it. So it's a very important core group to get started on this. So does that answer your question?
It does.
Yeah, okay.
It does.
Okay.
I may have other thoughts after, but.
Okay. Vice Mayor Kendall?
So when we did the downtown thing, we included landowners. And I didn't know if that was a group that maybe gets considered, who knows? And also, I, I don't understand PG&E on this. I guess that would be my, I, I may, was that?
No, no.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
So, and, and also, Bart, do we need, do we have people come in from that far outside?
I wouldn't think so.
We can consult with them, maybe.
They're good sources of information.
Right.
Good point.
A thought.
Yeah.
Certainly, we can add them to the sort of general stakeholder list.
We might want to create that, right? A consultant list, you know, what are people we can consult with, and then the core group, maybe.
Yep. I think it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the way Bliss, when I've worked, that's, I think that's a great suggestion. When I've worked on similar things in the past, I worked on one that was a little bit more regionally in focus along El Camino Real corridor in Silicon Valley. There was sort of like a advisory committee, and then there was, I'm not getting the words right, so I apologize, but there was like advisory committee, and then there was like, sort of a technical advisory committee.
Okay.
Which would be sort of like this consulting group like Bart, where maybe they're not necessarily in the mix at all the meetings, but when we need particular types of data or technical expertise or sort of input that's a little bit more tactical in nature, we could draw on them. So I think your idea about piecing groups like that off is, is, really makes a lot of sense with this list. Are we doing just questions now?
Yeah, right ahead.
Or just comments?
No, questions and comments.
Okay. So I, first of all, the stakeholder list is great, so thank you for providing this as a starting point. I have a couple thoughts on it, just maybe things for staff to consider as they kind of move forward on this, or if other people want to chime in on some of these. But just a couple of things that occurred to me in looking at this, and again, I think it's a great list. I know renters are noted here, and along with homeowners, of course. And the one question I have there, just to think about as we go forward, is with the homeowners, because of the existing network of homeowner associations and the leadership of people like Carol and others, we have a very strong network and a way to reach homeowners in a fairly established and organized way. And so the question I would just have is how we would then go about trying to equally reach a sort of geographically representative body of renters as well when we do outreach around the plan. I mean, clearly doing outreach to some of the major rental properties, the Highlands and others like that would be natural, but then, the other question would be, how do we reach renters who are maybe individual renters dispersed throughout the community? So just kind of flagging that as a question for us to think about as we go forward. But I'm glad to see them flagged on here as one of the groups. I thought maybe, just categorically, because they're a user of city facilities and have certain needs around what the community provides or what the city provides, I also seen to me that LMYA might be a good place to add. I mean, it's obviously a sports association, but they have a lot of contact with some of the groups that are mentioned here, as groups that we want to reach, particularly the younger families. So that's one that I think we might want to think about how to engage. And the other thing that jumped out at me, not necessarily from membership, on the general plan advisory committee, but as a resource, are like organizations that have a history of civic engagement and have kind of like a local chapter structure. Now, they're often organized by counties, but by definition, they would all naturally have a lot of Lafayette members. So one that jumped out at me there was like the Legal Women Voters, has a lot of engagement and issues around, you know, everything related to community life. So reaching out to the Contra Costa County Chapter as another means of outreach might be a way to reach, reach some of the groups that we're trying to reach on this. So I just wanted to add those possible ideas to the mix. But like I said, very strong list. And I, I do appreciate the suggestion by the mayor also, that we maybe do a hybrid of picking stakeholders from particular groups, and then also maybe having some sort of at-large lottery, you know, system as well, just to get people who maybe don't have any official affiliation, but would be interested in, in serving on the, on the GPAC.
And just to add to that, I think you might even want to do it by different areas of the city. So like we did for the city manager process, so you have one for Burton Valley, one for, you know, Akalans, whatever. So, okay. Other thoughts? What other information do you want from us, or thoughts or direction on this are you looking for?
There was a couple of things, right?
I know there was more. I just.
So it, it sounds like in terms of their charge, they would be a referral body to the planning commission, and the planning commission would then make recommendations to this body. I think we generally covered who should be on the committee with members from some of these stakeholder groups, as well as a lottery system from regions in the city. And that covers number two as well. And then in terms of schedule, we were thinking once, once monthly to meet, but that may be our details that we can work through.
Yeah, I think, I think you do that as you see how things work. I mean, one of the things, I remember, we did have a consultant working with the general plan advisory committee. So that consultant needed to kind of set a pace, just, once they knew who they had and who was showing up, as to how they could tackle the different issues that had to be gone through. So, it did take 10 years, but, you know.
So we're also hoping that this only takes three, maybe four years.
Let's aim for one and see what happens. People care a lot about this city. That's what it comes down to.
So are we going to get a consultant to follow on your line? It doesn't, I don't see that in here. Is that a thought, that we're going to do that or not?
So.
We don't intend, we'll, we'll take the direction from the city council, but it's staff's intention not to retain a lead consultant to shepherd the general plan update. In past long-range planning efforts, the general plan update in 2002, which was ultimately adopted in 2002, as well as the initial draft of the downtown specific plan, I think the community's reception to the consultant's work was less than enthusiastic. And the, because the general plan is the, the guiding document for the city, I think it's critical that the staff working on it have a, have a longstanding familiarity, familiarity and intimacy with the, the, all of the different entities in the community and the community's values, and that, that will impart itself into the document. I think we had, so prior to the roughly 1990 launch of the general plan update, the, the prior general plan had been adopted in 1974, and I think mimeographs were the technology at the time. And so there was a lot that had changed in that, in those intervening years. And it took some time to update it, but the plan that was adopted in 2002, if you read it now, much of it, the predominance of it still resonates, and we have it in Microsoft Word. And so it is a much stronger fundamental document to update, rather than essentially kind of rebuild from, from scratch. And so, given our past experience with consultants and the city's fiscal conservancy and our familiarity with the city, it's our intention to, with Sarah and myself, lead it with additional planning staff help in-house. We will need to retain outside consultancy for specific tasks. Certainly, we have Diana Elrod helping us with the housing element update, which is already underway. We're doing background studies and data gathering and some preliminary analysis, because our general, rather, our housing element update is due less, in, in, under 24 months, in about 20 months. And so we will, Ms. Elrod will help us extensively with the housing element update, and we will need a CQ consultant as well. And so, on a, on a case-by-case or task basis, we will be needing to retain people, but not, it's not our intention to retain an overarching lead consultant.
Sounds good. You mentioned AB 2923, the Bart piece of this, and so that's another component. Do we have a timeline on that in terms of adopting the new zoning? Is there a limit?
It is coincident with the housing element update. So.
Okay.
We must update our housing element by the end of 2022. RENA allocations will be out by that time, and we'll have to update our, our element by the end of 2022. Similarly, AB 2923 implementation is due at the same time.
Okay, good. All right, great. All right. Any other questions or comments for staff? Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? David Clark, come on up.
Hi, I'm Dave Clark. I live in Lafayette. And contrary to the direction you've been going, we, I'm speaking on behalf of the Creeks Committee, and I have spoken with both Jeff Gilman and Will Elder and, tentatively, for presentation tonight, and we'll get confirmation from the whole Creeks Committee at a future meeting if, if, if necessary. But we'd like to be included in the process. So I want to make a pitch for being included in the list of stakeholders on the, on the last page. I know you're trying to maybe cut it down, but the reason, we've got several reasons as to why we think that's important. One, we did participate directly on the downtown specific plan, and, and we also clearly participated in the present, in the development of the downtown Creeks plan. And we're starting to get into some real money projects, as you probably know. The first in Golden Gate rain for, rain garden project is, we had a grant for $190,000 for that. The Creek Icons that were mentioned by the Art Council today, the first one is, is to be fabricated, but the idea is to have a number of those throughout the city at various locations. We, we work with, we work very closely, actually, with the Park Trails Recreation Committee, Commission, and the, the Trails Committee in particular. So there, there's a lot of convergence between what we're trying to do at the Creeks Committee and the Trails component of the Park Trails and Rec Committee, but they're separate. I mean, I, I don't think that, that PTNR would be able to fully argue for the connection with the Creeks with some of those, the projects that we do share. We also have a, probably less so, a connection with the Planning Commission, the Design Review Commission, but it's, it's, again, I don't think any one of, any one of those groups speaks for the other. We also have a connection with the city staff, because all these projects, first in Golden Gate, the Icons, all those involve the city staff. So for all those reasons, we think it would be beneficial to the city for us to be involved in the, in the, the general planning development and therefore ask to be included on the list of stakeholders, at least consideration for inclusion on the list of stakeholders that you're, that's before you.
Okay. Questions for the speaker? All right, thank you. I think staff will take that under advisement, and I do know that the Creeks master plan is certainly going to be a component of this general plan and will be integrated in. Carol Singer?
Carol Singer, 3461 South Silver Springs, wrote, "I also questioned the Bart and PG&E being on there, and I think they're going to, if they're going to be part of an advisory committee of some kind, it should be East Bay Mud, Xfinity, AT&amp;T, you know, these other services." Certainly, East Bay Mud is just as important as PG&E, I think. Okay. For seniors, I would highly recommend you have someone from the Senior Services Commission. They're very active. I do agree about having someone from the Creeks Committee, and maybe for youth, someone from the Youth Commission. And maybe even someone from La Merinda Village also for the seniors, or if you're going to, Ruth McCacken is on both Senior Services and the La Merinda Village. You could kill two birds with one stone. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any questions for the speaker?
No questions, but I do want to welcome you back, Carol.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? All right. We'll bring it back to the council for any last-minute comments or direction. Any comments? Vice Mayor Kendall?
I do have one comment on the timeline. I know we didn't really talk about that, but it seems that identifying the GPAC by the end of April seems optimistic, maybe? It's not a, it's not a set into, it just seems like that would be fast for, that's like a month from now, right? Or whatever. So anyways, I don't know. Hopefully, that's not completely set in stone. We'll be thoughtful about the people that are on it.
Agreed. We're eager to get going on it, and so I think we want to confirm that the consensus of the council and the direction of the staff is that the council will task the planning commission with making the appointments to the GPAC? Or is that something that the, the liaisons to the planning commission, so Mayor Anderson and Councilmember Bliss, along with the chair of the, and vice chair of the planning commission, so very much like appointing someone to the planning commission, conducting those interviews, that subcommittee. that subcommittee of four could also conduct the interviews and appointments to the General Plan Advisory Committee.
So I didn't see a recommendation on that. So I, I don't know if staff has a preference one way or another. Why don't you give us a sense of what you'd like to say?
I think that would be our recommended committee if it, if it suits the full commission, full council. We could also bring back with that committee of four conducting the interviews. We could bring back the full list of proposed appointees for full council action.
Okay, let me see, take the temperature of the council. How's that sound? Are we okay with that, Vice Mayor Candell?
I think that's, that's great, yeah. That would be, if that's okay with you guys.
Councilmember Bliss, you wanted to put the time in? Okay. So let's go with that as the way we'll get our G-PAC actually formed. That sounds fine. Vice Mayor Candell.
So back to the timeline, in order not to put, you know, get time for you. You guys should be rolling, you know? There's a lot of work that can be done, even if that group hasn't been quite decided yet, right? So I don't think that that should hold you back in your efforts. I guess that would be my advice.
Okay. Any other questions or direction that's needed?
No, I think the initial, the, our, our request was to get your direction to move forward with formation of G-PAC, which I think is instrumental. And one of the first tasks of G-PAC will be finalizing an outreach program. And through the middle part of the year, certainly several months, conducting outreach with respect to objectives. Strategic objective, strategic goal number two.
Got it. Good. Okay. Well, all right, that, we've given direction and we've received the report. Thank you for the report and the timeline. And is there any other action you want from us? Thank you very much. Good report. Okay, we'll move now to council commission reports, council member reports on activities and consideration of matters for council members on a future agenda. Councilmember Gueringer, anything to report or, or future agenda?
Couple of things.
Okay.
Okay. So we're moving forward with the Park Theater Plaza overlay. We have, I think we have another meeting coming up soon, but we'll be coming back to the council with recommendation on that soon. Vice Mayor Candell and I met, we convened and City Manager Sravatsa and, I always do this, Jennifer Wakeman. We pulled together our first of many city schools committee meetings. And we're, we have the Akalani Superintendent, the Lafayette Superintendent, and two board members from Lafayette School District. As we move forward, Akalani's will bring in two members as well. So we've expanded to include all, all the, both of the districts, TK to 12. And our initial goal is to look at the work that we did last year on the strategic recommendations. Our timeline, we're backing up from budget time. So in April, giving city staff some good information and taking into consideration staffing and, and budget on the priorities that we want to tackle this year. So we had a meeting last Friday, we're meeting again this Thursday, and the current plan is to meet weekly until we map out that matrix. Every other week, sorry. I'm so excited. This week, this, this one, we're having it one week because I'm gone, the following week. So anyway, every other week, and we will then decide after that, but we'll be coming back to council with those updates as we go along. Councilmember, I'm just going to note this, and then I have connected with staff, but Councilmember Bliss and I had the honor of meeting with some young constituents from Burton Valley who gave us an update on their project to change habits in terms of idling in our cars at pickup and drop-off. And last year, they were out there with signs and did measurements and had success. And so now they're going to present to the
Dangerous.
Yeah. And they're going to present to the school board. And they just wanted to get some input. We happen to know their, their chaperone and driver, the two of us do. But Narup and Greg, I'm going to connect them and they're going to talk about how they go through the process, taking things to a commission and looking at how they can bring their ideas forward. Because it turns out in the city of New York, they have a three-minute ordinance, a three-minute limit on idling. So, so they have, they have aspirations and, and goals and they were, gave us much hope. Just amazing young, young constituents, future leaders. CCTA, we met, again, we met, we meet monthly, but we met last week. The, I will share it next time. I know we have the FASTER on the agenda. The CCTA leadership has developed a position statement or position framework, if you will, on faster or any other sort of mega measure that might be coming forward. And have been having meetings with the legislators about what they feel contra costa needs. And so I will provide that update at the, at the next meeting. The other piece is that due to the, just general rotation of the earth, I am now the Vice Chair of, of CCTA. Julie Pierce is the Chair. And just as we rotate, it's, it was the time for, for Lafayette to, to be there. So, and then just a reminder that we have an election coming up shortly. And there are, there's the Measure J that is on the ballot and then also Measure L. I know we're going to discuss A-BAG, but I attended that as well and very much appreciated and look forward to that discussion in a few moments.
Okay. Councilmember Bliss, any items?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Sort of a lot of committee activity on the planning front, but I wanted to just mention Wednesday night, the committee that's tasked with appointing the seventh Planning Commissioner will be meeting and interviewing a couple of candidates and possibly coming back to this council, the recommendation, in the coming weeks. And then next week on the fourth, I'm kind of looking to Sarah here, the TDR meeting is confirmed, right? So we'll be having a meeting of the Planning Subcommittee of the council, continuing to talk about the Transfer Development Rights Ordinance, the TDR Ordinance, and then also anything that needs to be discussed, in particular on strategic goal number two related to the general plan update. So that's coming up next week on the fourth. And then, as I mentioned most months, I continue to represent the council as the liaison to the Lafayette Library and Learning Center Foundation. And Executive Committee met last week. So I attended that via phone because I had to be over in the city for a meeting early in the morning, but I joined them by phone. And then the next board meeting of the foundation is Wednesday. I actually will have to miss that due to attending the Planning Commission interviews that I mentioned a moment ago. But appreciate the opportunity and really the privilege to be able to continue to represent the council as a liaison to that, to the foundation. That's it.
Staff?
Thanks.
Vice Mayor Candell?
So I, Councilmember Burks and I were on a long email quest. I don't know, would you call it a journey? With some very concerned residents about a new flight path coming into Oakland Airport. And Narup was on that as well. And flushed it out. And turns out that the route change that was proposed to the FAA six months ago does not go over Lafayette. It just goes over Arinda and Maraga. It goes over some watersheds. It is, however, transferring the flight path from, you know, a more populated path over the Oakland Hill, Oakland Berkeley Hills, into our, into open space, into San Pablo watersheds, into something like that. The concept is threading the needle over non-populated areas. And since it doesn't go over Lafayette, we decided we'll just let Arinda and Maraga take this one in if they so choose. So that's how that one ended.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Well, I have no other items to report. I'll be on some of those meetings that you pointed out. So with that, we'll move on to City Manager's update. Nothing's going on. Okay, that's good.
Fabulous.
All right, Vice Mayor Candell's going to give us an update on Plan Bay Area 2050 and Rina.
Get this up, hang on one second.
Yep, no problem. Take your time.
Okay, so last week at the A-BAG MTC, and this was like two weeks ago now, Administrative Committee, the MTC voted in favor of the proposed draft blueprint growth geographies. A-BAG didn't have a quorum, so they voted last week. How this all works is that they are expanding the definitions of priority development areas. And there was a map, and I had asked staff to be able to bring that up. Is that possible? Remember those three maps? Okay, okay, so I, they were the one with our current PDA, the proposed PDA expanded? Did you, can you present those? Okay, perfect.
It'll take me a minute, but
Okay, perfect. Okay, so I'll keep talking while Greg is going to put those up on the, on the screen. And so what they're doing is that they are, they voted in favor of quote-unquote "option B", which has in all local jurisdictions, a priority develop, a PDA is nominated by local jurisdictions and adopted by the A-BAG Executive Board. They're also taking the priority production areas nominated by local jurisdictions and adopted by A-BAG. Transit area-rich areas within a half a mile of a regional rail station or bus stay with 15 minutes or better during AM peak periods, including BART and Caltrain. Then they added this phrase, "in local jurisdictions that have nominated less than 50% of the PDA-eligible areas as PDAs." And that was one that made people pause. And so dug into that. And, and basically they're going to enforce all jurisdictions to make sure that at least 50% of their eligible PDAs are PDAs. And if they don't, then they have to, then A-BAG, this, this method, will all remaining transit-rich areas not explicitly identified above, which is included in both high resource areas and places outside high resource areas. And high resource areas are this kind of nebulous term that they're defining as nice communities with great schools and lots of
Job-rich.
And job, not necessarily jobs-rich. No, not jobs-rich. That wasn't part of it. They're high resource. And high resource areas within a quarter mile of a bus stop. And so what I took that to mean, and I think we've edited out, is that we would be impacted if we hadn't nominated 50% of our eligible PDAs to be within our PDAs. And I think at this point, I was able to look at these maps and I think we have. So basically, we nominated all of our eligible PDAs as PDA. So this won't impact us, except for they added, if you get the map up, it's coming? Cool. Okay, so if you can see the brown, those are our existing PDAs. And that happens to be quote-unquote downtown. And that is what we consider and what they consider to be all of our eligible PDAs. And so clearly, that 50% margin is not. What they wanted to add on with the blue, was the blue teal, which is into Happy Valley, into Happy Valley Glen to the north, and then into some of our residential communities to the south. And I, I think in their exclusions, they say what, they exclude wildland urban interface areas. I reminded them that that's not really a legal term, right? And so the other, you know, the pieces that we've been seeing in the legislature lately has been very high fire hazard severity areas. And so I don't think we're going to have to address the blue ones because we have the 50% thing. But if we had to, that would be the way to address the ones on the north. I don't know how we would address the ones on the south, but I guess that's where, I'm trying to give you a status of where I think we are right now. Okay? So I think that, I think that's where we are.
Yeah, good. So, so just to generalize what you're saying, we should not see any change in our PDA area?
I'm assuming that. Or do we want to take, this is the time when they'll take responses, right? And that's what, we may want to say what I just said as a formal, or talk to A-BAG and go, "We believe this to be true, that we don't fall into this category. Let's, let's make sure we aren't in those categories," right? Just kind of get some, maybe some, but that would be a separate item on a separate agenda, but that might be.
Not necessarily. So is that a question that we can pose to the staff there to get a bit, better clarification of what Vice Mayor Candell is talking about?
And I would like to clarify with Vice Mayor Candell, is this the question that, that Diana Elrod is looking, inquiring with MTC A-BAG about?
I don't think that she answered, they didn't answer the question. Like basically, I'm talking about this specific part of this option, how we feel. I mean, they start talking about Rinas, and I'm not even talking about Rinas. I'm talking about PDAs and exactly what they addressed right here. And it seems like this would be our opportunity to address what is right here in terms of our PDAs and what, how we think our PDAs, you know, land within their exclusions and not exclusions. Whether we want to make that formal would be my thought.
And so certainly we can get clarity or forward any question. We just need to be clear on what that question is or articulate what our understanding is and ask the MTC A-BAG staff to affirm our understanding is correct.
Okay, well, I guess I would generalize it as our PDAs do not need to change.
And we're outside of these other, like basically the blue goes away. That would be, in a nutshell, we think we've met this 50%. And so the additional areas outlined in, if we had less than that, don't apply to us. And therefore, those blue areas on the map should not apply to Lafayette. Does that make sense? No, I'm seeing a very confused face over there.
No, it, it's a, I'm just trying to craft it in my head with respect to the terminology that I understand A-BAG MTC to be using with respect to the growth geographies. So correct that the area in red is Lafayette's PDA. It was self-nominated, it is, in essence, our downtown. And to a large extent, it, up until, you know, First Street or the police station essentially, it's within half a mile of the, the BART station. The additional blue areas that you see to the north and south are also within half a mile of transit. And according to A-BAG MTC's methodology thus far, would be included in the growth geometries for Plan Bay Area 2050.
No, I, I, no, I'm saying, not quite right. It's be, it's like the, our PDA is quote-unquote "our eligible PDA." And that's what we're, and so is clearly over 50% of our eligible, even if you include those blue areas. And so we should not have to fall into the category where those blue areas should count for us. Because that's part of that 50%. If we're under 50%, they would say that those blue areas are in. But because we've already, we have over 50%, they shouldn't go to those areas.
So the question we would be asked to affirm, confirm? So, the question we would be asked to affirm, confirm with MTC ABAG is that Lafayette has already placed into its current PDA more than 50% of the eligible area that could go into our PDA. And thus, we've, we are.
Gold.
Have satisfied, have satisfied it, have satisfied that requirement. And thus, the blue areas would not be added into PB, Plan Bay Area 2050 growth geographies.
That would be perfect.
Can do. Okay.
Just to get clarification, right?
That's a can do. So, we're going to get verification on that. And, and just so I'm clear, so this is really all about setting growth in Plan Bay Area 2050, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, this is them putting their plan together over everyone else's plan, what they want to do, but they can't do that to us because we've already covered more than 50% of the area that they would consider.
Yes.
Good.
Okay.
That sounds great. I'm glad you were there.
Thank you. All right. So, I think that's all I have on that one. And then.
Let's see if there's any other questions.
Oh, yeah, please, go, yeah, go back.
So, any thoughts, Councilmember Geringer?
Yes, thank you for bringing this. And so, I just want to make sure you're interpreting it, and they're going to verify, with, staff is going to verify with ABAG that your interpretation is correct.
Interpretation is correct. That's what we're going to get verification on that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Okay?
Thank you for bringing this.
Councilmember Bliss, anything?
Nothing to add. Just thank you to Vice Mayor Candell for tracking this so closely, and also to Councilmember Geringer for attending as well and keeping us surprised.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? But I just asked, okay. So, with that, let's move on to the next update on ABAG General Assembly Meeting and Faster Bay Area Transportation Tax.
So, they didn't talk that much about Faster, did they? No, that was kind of in that last one. And I'll make, so I'll make a comment about Faster, but more about the meeting. The general meeting was February 7th. The keynote speakers were State Senators Bell and Scott Weiner and Assembly Member David Chu. And just in a nutshell, housing, and it wasn't transit or jobs, were their key areas of focus. It was mentioned right at the start that LA's Rena numbers were just increased to three times their previous numbers. And so, I think that that is maybe what we can expect. For Contra Costa, Supervisor Burgess pushed the concept of jobs out in her areas, in remote areas close to transit opposite, that was great. Mayor Tom Butt of Richmond pushed to bring back redevelopment funds to help cities build the housing. Made sense. And I'll say this, the city of Cupertino was the subject of a couple of direct quotes by the speakers. And, and then during the response time from members there, they didn't let Mayor Sharp speak, who is the current mayor of Cupertino. And there was a pretty big negative response from the crowd, and the mayor was then able to respond. Right? His major point about the Apple spaceship development is that the prior use of that site was an HP campus that provided 9,800 jobs. And now, Apple has 13,000 jobs. And so, they only netted about 3,000 jobs. It would keep saying, "They just added 13,000 jobs." It's like, well, no, we just, you know, the difference was not that big, but.
It was only 3,000.
Yes. But he did make the point that the Rena numbers are 600, and none of the developers want to build affording, affordable housing, which is true from a lot of the press that's been going along around and how expensive it is. He did make the very good point about amending SB 35 to encourage multifamily housing, not just studios or single fam, or single bedroom units. Couple people spoke up about that on how we weren't targeting a lot of these laws around multi, about family units. They're typically, they're typically very small, and that's not encouraging families to move in. There apparently is maybe a new AB bill, AB 725, that may not allow us to count our ADUs as part of our Rena numbers. I went, oh, that's probably a gap that maybe we should ask Casey about. The, I didn't know, so the city of Millbrae was just presented with an eminent domain for a new high-speed rail station in their town. And their big problem was that they're going to take out some housing and some things and put in a big surface parking lot. And I go, oh, come on, you know, work with us. Is there any way that we can work with that and make it, you know, parking with housing on top or something like that? So, it was, it was a nice give and take on that. And she also made the point that our Rena numbers are number of units, not number of people. And I thought that was a really good point, that I, we kind of have lost that in the whole family thing, and we should be housing, you know, people, not just units. And actually, on Faster, the, at the last ABAG meeting, they had an agenda item that was more about Faster and not about this growth strategies. And there was a lot of dissent on that group about Faster being the only methodology and hoping to get different inputs. I don't know if that's going to be possible at this point, but it was very, it was far more controversial than I had imagined. And that's all that I, I didn't write anything down because I wasn't concentrating on that part, but, so that was it. So, those are the things that came up at that general meeting. But they are going to be pushing through, you know, soon. You know, this whole timeline is quick. I'm trying to stay as involved as I can. At the other meeting, there are representatives from other cities starting to come in to the process now, and it's not just to like the Executive Board and the Administration Board, like me and like people from Livermore and stuff like that. They're starting to get some more public input, which I, I think is important. I'll try to, I'll try to continue that.
Oh, great, great, great work. So, just for those who may not be familiar, Faster is a transportation tax. What's the timeline for that? When do they?
Okay, so it, it implies that it's a tax, and that's where the big brouhaha came about, was the wording, it's like, in, what they were voting on was, along with the special tax, we, a special, you know, sales tax, we want to have these other things. We want to consider other things. And that got completely stricken because I don't think everybody's decided that a sales, a regional sales tax is the right thing to put on the November ballot.
Right.
Right? And, and it was the city of Berkeley that had a lot of opposition to that because it's not equity-based. And, and there's like, we really ought to be looking at parcel taxes and maybe bonds or other things. Maybe a sales tax isn't the right approach. And the whole, the whole process of combining a, combining a transportation plus a housing versus a transportation and a housing, that got a lot of play. Because most people thought it was going to be more of a housing bill. And then all of a sudden, this morphed into this big transportation thing as well. And, and it didn't seem like there was a lot of cohesion yet on this central tenant.
It doesn't sound like they're going to make November.
They, they have not decided on the wording for November. I think staff has decided on the wording for November, but the ABAG and the MTC, so far, I've seen a lot of dissent.
Councilmember Geringer is giving me faces.
Not quite faces, but, so, so maybe we're talking different, talking different things. So, the Faster mega region.
By measure.
Measure. Actually, Senator Bell is, you know, working on that, and it has, you know, gone and been, we got a legislative report anyway at CCTA, but very quietly working on that sort of behind the scenes. And I think what he said at the ABAG meeting was to kind of keep working through the mechanics of it, getting input from transportation groups across the country, from cities, and, you know, from everyone who weighed in on it earlier, you know, last year. But it's a, it's a bill that actually he'll put forward through the legislative process. And Councilmember Bliss may know more on that. Then there's the other thing that ABAG is discussing was also in Assembly Member Chu's bill that, now I'm forgetting the numbers, and it's called Bafa or whatever, that piece that went through that was going to allow ABAG to put a measure on.
Or HABBA or whatever.
Yeah.
Oh, right, right.
So, so there are two pieces, but the Faster.
Ah, right, oh, okay. It's just the, oh, I always thought that was the same.
No. So, the Faster is the mega, mega measure to fund transportation and.
That's the deal.
And, yes, Senator Bell.
I missed that.
And, so, and what he said that day at ABAG was that partly also to get through the election, the primary election, and keep kind of working it, you know, working on it and then having those, you know, discussions as it goes through. But, so that's the Faster, and which you have in here. You have the, you know, legislation that he's talking about. And then I didn't see the meeting where they discussed, and Berkeley came out and all of that. So, but they will all be moving forward, and if it can get through the legislature, it can definitely be on in November. But there is still a lot of input coming from a lot of different sources on that as well.
No, please, that's great. Thank you, thank you.
I was a little bit making the face.
So, I thought this was the same, I thought that have, this whole HABBA thing was that, is not. Okay, so, there may be another separate ABAG and MTC-proposed mega bill?
Well, so Faster is a big regional, I mean, the Bay Area, Wundermann's, you know, a whole bunch of businesses and the Silicon Valley Group and a lot of people who have been working on this. I don't know absolutely where that crossover is, but they're two different things. One is the ABAG MTC, you know, how do we fund, and that Assembly Member Chu. And then the other one is a huge, how do we do bridges and extra tunnels, you know, extra Bart tunnels and things.
Two things may be coming at us.
Yes. Okay, I got it.
I totally missed that.
Good.
Basically, the bottom line is there's a lot to keep up with. So, we're really glad we have Casey and Townsend and our Legislative Committee too, but all of us are trying to pay attention to what's coming at us.
And I think it's, it's really critical that in the process of discussing these things, if we can be present, that we be present to add some input. It sounds like you were able to do that, and thank you very much. That's great. That's good. Okay. And our comments, thoughts? Councilmember Bliss, anything? No? Okay. Any public comment on this item? All right. So, there's no real direction to staff on this. I think simply we're keeping an eye on it. All right. With that, we move on to written communication. We have email requesting a proclamation recognizing March 2020 as Red Cross Month in Lafayette. Any interest in that?
I'm happy to make a motion to support, to approve a proclamation recognizing March 2020 as Red Cross Month in Lafayette.
Okay. I have a motion.
A second.
And I have a second. Councilmember Bliss, any comments or concerns?
Yeah, great.
All right, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous with one absence. We also have an email requesting a proclamation recognizing March 2020 as Prescription Drug Abuse Awareness Month in Lafayette.
And I am also happy to move this. I do want to say that in my, my part-time day job, that I actually also represent Supervisor Burgess on the Contra Costa County Meds Coalition. And there, this part of the effort coming out of that organization, and April Rivera, who lost a son to drug overdose. And we have a number of members of our community, unfortunately, who have had personal experience with this. And so, I am happy to move that we approve the proclamation recognizing March 2020 as Prescription Drug Abuse Awareness Month in Lafayette.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous with one absence. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you. Before nine o'clock? Wow. Well, well, well.